Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison, Zoning Board of Adjustment, virtual meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 28, 2019, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2020. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just was wondering, is Hank on there?
No.
Not yet? Okay. All right. Ms. Federick?
Here.
Mr. Ski Bar? Not present.
No, he's excused.
Mr. Kamba?
Here.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Mansouri?
Here.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Here.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Sadada?
Not yet.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Present.
Mr. Ayat?
Here.
Mrs. Shaw?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Lillian. Okay, before I ask everyone to go on mute, I've been doing this every meeting. I think it's appropriate. I'd like to take a moment of silence for all of those who have passed away from the COVID-19. Okay, thank you. I'd appreciate it if everyone would put themselves on mute, please. It will just give us a little bit less of a bouncing off sound until you're ready to speak. Welcome to our second Zoom meeting. Did learn some things first time around. Number one, to keep yourself on mute. Number two, we noticed last week that sometimes there's a delay from when you speak to when we hear you. So I think it would be better if everyone just spoke a little bit slower, just to give us the time to go back and forth. I'm assuming some of that has to do with all the different platforms that everybody's calling in on. So having said that, I will ask Lillian to, by the way, the first case, Z042020, Prashant Patel, that has been postponed until the July meeting. No notices were sent out, so notices will be sent out when we give them a definite date. Lillian, can you please read the second case? Yes.
Case Z32020, Ali Rashish, 4 Bartha Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, 08817. Section 3763-1, 637-13, bulk and use variance is sought to expand the existing nonconforming two-family dwelling. A two-family dwelling is not a permitted use. Second floor at a level consisting of two bedrooms and an attached garage addition is being proposed. Combined side yard setback required is 18 feet, proposed is 7 feet 11 inches. Effective property is located in the RB zone designated as Block 906, Lot 13F on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Thank you, Lillian.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Shire.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Bernard Shire with Convery Convery and Shire, and I represent the applicant, Ali Alriyashi Raishi. With regard to this application, I would like to correct one item that was read into the record. This is not an application for a use variance, because I checked with my client and the tax records for the township. This is actually a single-family house that was originally constructed as a duplex, two-family, but it is now two separate lots sharing a common wall. So it is a single-family home, and the variance for the side yard is obviously required because there is a common wall with a zero setback on one side, although we do meet the minimum setback for one side of 6 feet, but we can't meet the setback for two side yards of 18 feet. The property is 4 Bartha Avenue, Lot 906, Lot 13F, in the RB zone. The present use is a single-family dwelling, which it was actually part of a two-family dwelling which was subdivided at some point in the past. The proposal is to add a garage with a second story above it with bedrooms and a family room for living space, and the variance is for the obvious side yard violation, which occurs simply by nature of the fact this is a duplex. I have Mr. Raishi present to testify, if necessary, and I do have Angelo Valletudo, who is a licensed engineer and planner of the state of New Jersey, to indicate the character of the neighborhood and what the reasons are that this should be permitted under the circumstances of the property. If there are no initial questions, I'll be happy to proceed.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Shire?
Madam Chair, I just have one. Sorry, Phil, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Phil Taglianetti. One question.
Okay, sure.
Is the addition going to be treated as a separate rental, or is it going to be part of the single residence?
Part of the single residence, sir.
Thank you. I'll go back on mute.
Okay. Mr. Ayat, you had a question?
Skip. There are no duplexes. You can put that down. Pardon? Okay. There are no duplexes in our ordinance, so this, in effect, become two single-family attached. This is a single-family attached home.
Yes, that's correct. It's a single-family home that shares a common wall with the home on the next property.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that. Not duplex.
Any other questions of the board for Mr. Shire?
Is the second, is the second living space occupied currently?
The houses are occupied. Mr. Raishi occupies the property in question, which is 4 Bartha Avenue. The other property is occupied by his father, which is 2 Bartha Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Mansouri? Okay, any other questions of Mr. Shire? Okay, Mr. Shire, you can, yes, Mr. Beatty, do you have a question?
Madam Chair, I just had one quick question. The drawings don't show it, so I'm just going to ask a question from the engineer. Are the existing foundations for the exterior wall adequate to take the additional loads from this addition?
Mr. Valletudo?
We have to wait till Ms. Shaw swears them in before you start asking questions like that. So having said that, Mr. Shire?
Yes, I guess that question would have to be answered by the architect, since obviously I'm not qualified to answer that question. But I can represent that we certainly would comply with all building codes of the state of New Jersey and the Township of Edison in constructing the addition.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Shire?
Unless there are any other questions about the project, which is kind of self-explanatory, I'd like to call Mr. Valletudo.
Sure. Mr. Valletudo, would you raise your hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. And as everyone knows, I'm a fast talker, so if, Ms. Federick, raise your hand. If I'm talking too fast, I'll slow down.
We realized that last week. Ordinarily, it's not a problem, but we realized with the Zoom, sometimes it is. But I'll let you know. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, perhaps, well, first, as Mr. Shire indicated, I'm a registered professional engineer, professional planner. State of New Jersey, I've been so for close to 40 years. I've had the pleasure and honor of appearing before this board over those past almost 40 years.
Okay, we'll accept your qualifications, Mr. Valletudo.
Thank you. Maybe if we go first with the question with regard to the support foundation. The foundation, if this application is approved, it's just going to be a foundation that's designed for what will be the two-story addition. The existing foundation is going to be adequate and exist for the living space now, so that when, if approved, when we get the addition, the foundation would have to be sufficient to support both the garage and the second floor above it. Okay?
Hi, Mr. Beatty?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Valletudo.
Thank you. The property is identified as Block 906, Lot 13F, as shown on the Township of Edison Tax Map, also known as, as Mr. Shire indicated, 4 Bartha Place. Subject property is the right side of a duplex sharing a common wall with number 2 Bartha, which, if you look on the plans and the survey submitted by the architect, is on the left side. The application is to add a 13-foot wide by 34.17 feet deep, two-story addition onto the right side of the existing dwelling. The first story will be for a one-car garage, while the second story will be for a family room in the front and a bedroom in the back, to create a total of four bedrooms. And as anyone can see when they see the alley photo, he's got three future beauty stars there that are part of his family, who will reside with him and his wife at this location, continue to, excuse me. Under the RSIS standards, a four-bedroom dwelling requires three, two-and-a-half-off street parking spaces. The application will provide a total of three, with one being in the garage, and sufficient space for two to be within the driveway that will access the garage. And that's because the driveway is a total length of 38 feet, which is sufficient to accommodate two parked cars. Subject property is situated, as was discussed earlier, in the RB residential district, which does not include, and I'm sorry, Mr. Shire, but I must agree with our zoning officer, Mr. Ayat, an attached single-family dwelling, which is an existing use of the property, while the proposal is to expand the existing structure. In my opinion, is technically an expansion of that use, which we offer that, in my opinion, is more technical in nature than to create a brand-new use of having another attached single-family dwelling. And the benefits, in my opinion, as I discuss this application, will offer that it is, the benefits of the application will substantially outweigh any detriments of which I see there are none. The proposal to expand the building's footprint by 13 feet will reduce the one-side yard from 20.33 feet down to 7.33 feet, where the RB zone requires a minimum side yard of 6 feet, so we accommodate that. The common wall, which has a zero setback, will remain whether this application will be approved or denied. Then, looking at what the total side yard is, we will reduce it from the 20.33 feet that exists now down to 7.33 feet, which is less than the minimum required of 18 feet. No other bulk variance are existing or created by the application. For example, front yard setback, 25 feet required, existing, proposed, 38.08 feet. A rear yard, minimum required, 30 feet, existing and proposed, 70.58 feet. Lot coverage, maximum 23 percent, existing is 11 percent, and with the proposal, if approved, will increase it to 18 percent. The building height, maximum height allowed is 30, excuse me, two-and-a-half stories, 32 feet. The existing proposal is two stories and 28.67 feet, which, as shown on the architectural plans, is less than what exists now, and also less that is permitted by the zone. The impervious coverage maximum is 40 percent, existing is 18, and the proposal will increase it only to 25. The FAR maximum is 0.44, the existing is 0.235, and the proposed will be 0.373. Subject property is on the southerly side of Bartha Avenue. An inspection of the southerly side from Sutton's Lane to Noel Avenue reveals a total of eight lots, all of which are two-family uses. As best as possible, from a site inspection, four of the two families are duplexes, meaning that the living spaces are side by side, and the remainder are, appear to be, upper lower. But again, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to start knocking on doors and going through and looking the way it laid out. Thus, the property's expansion...
Mr. Valletudo, can you back up a little bit? We lost you there. Back up about two sentences. I did not hear you at all.
Okay.
Sorry. I think the last thing we heard is about you knocking on doors.
Right.
That's because you're so scary, you know? You might scare somebody. What can I tell you?
Exactly. No, what I said is, the site inspection I did was from walking along the street, and it's amazing how if you walk by with a pad and have a tie on, people technically don't bother you. Maybe they think I was the tax assessor who was going to raise their taxes. But from what I viewed, approximately half of the two families are side by side, and the remainder, the other four, appear to be upper and lower, although I can't tell for sure. One thing I can tell you is the units are very similar from the standpoint that each one has its driveway separated, with one driveway on the left side of the dwelling and one driveway on the right side. That is what exists today on 4 Bartha and will continue to exist should this application be approved, or quite honestly, even if it's denied, but it would just be a driveway and we wouldn't have a one-car garage. So then, thus...
Mr. Valletudo, we're losing you again.
I just lost them.
You gotta back it up again.
This is clearly...
We're losing you. Angelo? You're frozen. Jim, what do you suggest you do? You're sort of frozen?
Next.
Okay. Angelo, can you hear me? Can you log out and come back in?
Probably can't hear you.
So there you go. Okay, we'll wait a minute for Mr. Valletudo to come back in. Hank is present. Mr. Bignell is now present, Lillian. Good evening, Mr. Bignell.
Everybody, can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Valletudo?
I think Mr. Bignell...
We lost you again. We're having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, how about now? It seems to be I'm on now. Okay, good. So three of, okay, I'll back up a sentence or two. With regard to the issue of side yard setbacks, three of the eight properties have existing side yard setbacks that are less than the subject property's proposal, including lots 11A and 12B, which have side yard setbacks on both sides that are less than what we are proposing. Based on my knowledge of the application and the above testimony, I see no detriment to the applicant's proposal to the area, the township master plan, or the zoning ordinance of the Township of Edison. The application will provide the applicant to have a two-story addition, which will be used for a garage, and also another bedroom that will be for his family members. And for all the reasons I've so testified, I offer that the board, in my professional opinion, would have sufficient proofs to grant the proposed application.
Thank you, Mr. Valletudo. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Valletudo?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Valletudo, will there be any other alterations done to the house, other than the, what you're proposing, the garage and the second floor?
I am not the architect, although I sometimes dabble into that field, as well as the legal field. All I can say that the only addition will be internal within the building, and that the outside facade will all be matching. It won't be where this addition would stand out from the remainder of the dwelling.
Okay, looking at the survey, on the right side, the house that we're, the portion that we're adding the garage to, it shows that there is a walkway that comes out of the right side of the house. Is that, is that in existence? Is that what's there now?
It is, and I believe they're utilizing that if you turn to the architectural plan to be the location where the garage would connect into the living space.
Correct. So where would the entrance to the house be if it's not going to, if it's not there?
Well, you have the main entrance in the front, and there is a rear entrance in the back, which appears to be as sliding doors.
So there's no entrance to this, to this house on Bartha Avenue?
No, there is. There is, there is one. If you look all the way on the first sheet, you'll see the stairs that lead into the house in the front. That's existing and will continue, as well as the back of the house. The only thing that there will not be, as shown on the architectural plans, there will not be any outside access into the garage. The only access will be through the garage door. I take it back. I was looking at the second level. If you look on the first level, there'll be a man door at the back on the right, left-hand side of the addition.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. Valletudo from the board? None? Okay, Mr. Shire? We can't hear you. Unmute yourself, Skip, please.
I'm electronically challenged. I apologize.
Don't worry.
Unless the board has any other questions about the project, it's relatively simple. And if they do want to ask any questions of the applicant, I'll be happy to have him sworn.
Okay, I will ask a question. I assume you've gotten the report from the township engineer, Mr. Shire?
Yes.
And I'm assuming your client will comply?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, does the board have any other questions of the architect, of Mr. Valletudo, of the applicant, or of Mr. Shire?
Madam Chair.
None? Okay. There being none, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Here's where we have to wait a little bit.
Have to wait. There's one person who's raised her hand.
Is there? Okay.
His name's Joe.
Joe. Can you bring him in then, somehow?
Nope.
Okay. Sir, are you there from the public? Your name is Joe? Sir? Hello? Is there a gentleman out there from the public named Joe? You're showing up on our screens.
Do some people just watch, maybe? I don't know. All right, well, he's disabled now. We'll drop his hand. If there's somebody on the phone who wants to jump in, hit star nine on your phone.
Okay, tell them. Okay, if there's anyone out there that does want to speak, hit star nine on your phone, please, and we'll be able to tell.
John K.
Okay, is there someone out there named John K? Sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. If you'll wait one moment, I'll have our attorney swear you in, please, sir. Sir, would you please state your phone number for the record?
My name is John Calagritis.
Okay, sir, do you raise your high hands? Do you solemnly swear to, or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Sir, what would you like to tell us?
Okay, my name is John Calagritis. I own the property in 12 Bartha Avenue, and, hello? Yes?
Sir, hold on a minute. The attorney, she forgot to ask you, what is your address, please? Your address?
I own the property in 12 Bartha Avenue.
Okay, fine. And you probably weren't on at the beginning. You have to slow down when you're speaking. Because of the Zoom and the technology, there's sometimes a delay, and we don't get to hear everything. So please, slow down your speech, so we can hear everything you have to say.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I own the property on 12 Bartha Avenue, and I'm also on behalf of my father, who is unable to join this meeting, and he owns 11, 14 Bartha, and 16 Bartha.
Hey, hold on a minute, sir. You can't testify on behalf of your father. You can only testify on behalf of yourself.
Okay, that's fine.
Take our way.
So I've been living in this area. I was raised and grew up in the neighborhood on Bartha Avenue, and I know the area very well. I visit it at least once or twice a day. And what I've noticed in number two and number four Bartha is that there are too many cars parked on the street and the driveway. Now, even though you guys pointed out as a single-family house, it's only a single-family on paper. This house is a duplex, as there are more duplexes in Bartha Avenue. The driveways are a single-car driveways. You can't put two cars when one is back of the other. This is considered as one space, not two. This house, in the past, there was a, another addition built to it on the other side, 2 Bartha, and it was the same thing, a garage and a living space upstairs. And nobody mentioned this, I believe. This happened a few years ago. The other thing is, if this application goes through, this house will be too big of a house, which does not fit the neighborhood. Another thing that was not mentioned is that there is a sewer easement where this addition is going to be built. I don't know exactly where it is, but I know it passes between 4 Bartha and 6 Bartha, and it connects the other two houses on Sutton's Lane. And I don't know if it will affect the foundation or anything, but there is a sewer easement, and I don't know what the setbacks are required because of this. And now, going back to number two Bartha, where they built this addition a few years back, I never ever saw the garage open. All I see is air-conditioned unit in the windows. I see people going in and out, the door, there, the side door, the garage door. And what this is telling me is that it could be a, another apartment over there that they converted it. I'm not sure. I'm just asking, maybe. And, and, you know, I understand if the family wants to use it because they have four or five kids, and they need more living space, but if they want to put another couple or more families living there, I don't think that's fair to the neighborhood to have... And I don't know if it will affect the foundation or anything, but there is a sewer easement, and I don't know what the setbacks are required because of this. And now, going back to number two Bartha, where they built this addition a few years back, I never ever saw the garage open. All I see is air-conditioning unit in the, in the windows. I see people going in and out the door, there, the side door, the garage door. And what this is telling me is that it could be a, another apartment over there that they converted it. I'm not sure, I'm just asking, maybe. And, and, you know, I understand if the, the family wants to use it because they have four or five kids, and they need more living space, but if they want to put another couple or more families living there, I don't think that's fair to the neighborhood to have in a two-family house, to have four or five families living there. So therefore, I am against this motion, and I hope that you will see it the way that the neighbors see it, which a lot of neighbors are unable to come because they're not aware of this Zoom meetings, or they don't have computers, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will tell you, I know that you mentioned two Bartha, but two Bartha is not part of this application, and we can't take any of that into consideration. Four Bartha is, and that's what we are reviewing. Mr. Shire, would you like to respond at all, or have any of your professionals respond, or the applicant?
Well, I would ask Mr. Raishi. Mr. Raishi, are you there? Ali?
Yes.
Okay, sir, you have to be sworn in. We'll have him show us where you went.
Mr. Raishi, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
If you could come in closer, we could, it's hard to hear you better, maybe.
Okay.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Raishi?
Yes.
Does anyone live in your house besides you and your immediate family?
Only me and my immediate family.
And do you have any plans to move other people into your house?
No, just my kids and my family. I got six kids.
Okay. And the, if there is, there is no sewer easement, that would run under the exist, that, under the proposed addition, is there?
No.
You wouldn't be able to build on a sewer easement, correct?
No.
Is there anything else the board wanted to ask, Mr. Raishi?
Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, yes, sir. Who is that?
This is.
Mr. Patel? Okay, go ahead.
Sure, so Mr. Raishi, one of the members, John, John from Public, mentioned a lot of cars in the driveway park. Would you be able to answer that, what's the matter with the cars?
I have only three cars. Everybody is just parking the parking lot, you know, in the street. What, everything, everything is my car now? All the people parking in all Bartha Avenue. I only have two cars, that's it.
Okay, no, that's, if it came from the public comments, that's the reason I was asking.
Okay, fine, thank you. I do have a question. Mr. Ayat, is there any problem with what the gentleman mentioned about the sewer connection at all?
I see no easement on the survey submitted for this application. If there is an easement, no, absolutely, as Mr. Shire had said, he could not build on top of that easement. But there is none submitted showing that. Regardless, when the application comes before me and I review it, it has to be a current survey showing me any and all easements on that property. So I, there is none here that I presently see on this application.
And just to add, you said current, and this survey is dated October 2019, so that's about as current as you're going to get?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you. Any other questions of the board at this point? Is there any other, anyone else within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard from the public?
Yeah.
Who is it? Do we?
Joe or J O.
Okay, is there someone out there by the name of Joe or J O?
They're muted. I need time.
You have to unmute yourself, so we can hear you? Sir? Are you there? Joe? Joe?
Or J O.
Or J O?
He's not.
If you're there, please unmute yourself, so we can hear you.
He's unmuted.
Sir? J O, are you available? Is he still there, Jim?
And he has his hand up?
All right, sir, can you unmute yourself, so we can hear you, please?
He's not muted.
You're on mute, you have to unmute.
He's not on mute anymore, but he doesn't seem to be responding.
Are you there? There's a gentleman out there by the name of Joe or J O?
Or a lady.
Or a lady? Do you want to be heard? Are you there?
Uh huh.
Are you there?
Yeah, she's there. She, she is.
Yeah, well, we can ba, we can barely hear you.
No, she dropped out. She dropped the call.
All right, you think, let's see if, okay, we'll see if she calls back in. Her call dropped.
There's no one else.
Well, we have to give a chance to see if she calls back in. Okay, just bear along with us, we'll see if this young lady calls back in or not.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Jim, this is, this is probably a question for you. When I tried to read the date on this survey, the survey seems to be dated 2003. And reading that carefully, it says that this plate reflects conditions as of 10/2202. Is this really the, the, is the latest survey? This is be almost 18 years old? Or, or, I mean, I think that's the correct data I'm reading. It says 10/2202. Can you verify that, please?
I have updated over here somewhere.
And it says it may not show current conditions as of 19.
Well, good question, Mr. Beatty. I can tell you that I grew up in this neighborhood, and I, I know the Calagritis family very well. They're very good builders, and they're very knowledgeable with this area as well. And to my knowledge, to my personal knowledge, there is no easement on this lot. However, again, when the applicant comes to submit to me, it has to be a current survey with no conditions. So it would have to be a 2020 survey showing any and all easements or improvements on the property.
All right, Jim.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Beatty?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
I, I see the condition on the left-hand side.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's very good, I'm glad you pointed it out to the board. But again, I need a current survey from 2020, if there is any easement on this property.
Mr. Shire, can any of your professionals bear any light on this?
I don't, I don't think so, because I believe that you worked off that survey, but I will agree that you can make a condition of approval that a current survey be supplied to Mr. Ayat when applying for the permit, which he would have to do anyway.
Okay, fine. Okay, just one moment, please. Jim, is that person back?
Josephine.
Josephine, is she back?
Yeah.
I'm mute. Hello? Hello?
Very good. Can you wait one moment, please, so our attorney can get your address, your full name, and swear you in?
Sure.
Could you please state your phone name for the record?
Josephine Testa.
And raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Help you God?
Yes, I do.
And please provide us with your address.
I own 492, 494 Sutton Lane, which is right across.
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
Well, um.
And as I've been telling everyone, we've learned with this Zoom, if you have to really speak a little bit slower, so we don't miss words, because in the transmission, sometimes we lose a word here and there. So if you can try to speak a little bit slower than normally, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
For right now, the two concerns, there are a lot of cars there. We've counted up to eight. And the other side, the house originally was a duplex, and they put the garage on the left side. Now I understand they've subdivided the house as two single homes, correct? And that garage on the left, there's a, there's a like front door to it. I've never seen the garage door open. It seems to me that it's an added apartment, and I'm afraid that now doing it on the, on the right side, yes?
I don't, excuse me, I don't know if you heard, but we cannot take any kind of testimony with regard to the one on the left side, which is two Bartha. We're just talking on the right, which is.
Then forget that. I'm concerned that, I'm concerned that the garage on the right side is going to become another apartment, another living space, and now the corner, if you bring in the other house, will be four, we're condoizing, and it's not what the, what the neighborhood should be.
That's what the driver said.
Yeah, exactly. I agree with whoever the gentleman was before, but you couldn't hear me. There's, it's, I think it's.
I know, we had a little bit of a problem. All right, if you'll hold on, the applicant's engineer would like to answer your question. Mr. Valtudo, can you help this young lady, please, and answer her question?
Well, I think I can hopefully help her to be a little bit more assured. And as I indicated, I'm an engineer and planner, but I do dabble in the law. I would have no objection, and I'm sure Mr. Shire wouldn't, to have a deed restriction, should this application be approved, that this property is a single-family and cannot be used for more than one family, as well as having the board resolution. This way, you're having two areas in which the application as the enforcement is. And I shouldn't have spoken when Mr. Shire was having a drink, I didn't want him to choke on what he was drinking. But I, I think that would be a, an added feature to help give Josephine and the other gentlemen some assurance that we are not seeking to do anything other than to expand it, to have a garage, to have three off-streets parking spaces, and to have Ali and his family to be able to reside in that house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valtudo. Our zoning officer, Mr. Ayat, would like to say a word.
Thank you for that, Mr. Valtudo. I have a question for you. Is it possible to put in the resolution or in the deed restriction that at no time in the future can be, because I get quite a few applications coming before my desk, that people convert their garages into bedrooms or living space. This is being proposed to us tonight as a garage, and I think it should remain as a garage permanently. Is it possible to have that put in a deed restriction, that this cannot be turned into a bedroom at any time in the future?
Technically, the answer is yes, and I think that's a great, great addition on to what I had proposed, and I don't believe there's any legal means that would prohibit that, because it is a good approach.
Okay, ma'am, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Did that answer your?
Well, then I would, I have a garage at my house, and it's simply a garage door that lifts. I don't have another front door with a lock right in the front. So I would, I would think it would just be a garage door, then.
I don't know if you were listening to us at the beginning, but the only enter, and egress and, egress and ingress to the home will be the current front door and the current back door, and the garage will be a, a regular garage door. Am I correct, Mr. Shire? Mr. Shire, did you hear?
In the front, there's only the garage door in the front entrance, in the back, there's the entrance to the house. There will be a back, there will be a back entrance to the garage, I believe.
He did mention. Yes, but that's going into the house, it's not going outside. The door in the back of the garage is going into the home, correct?
No, there is going to be a man door in the back.
I'm sorry, say that again?
There is going to be a man door, three-foot-wide door that would exit the garage in the back.
Oh, okay. Oh, you go in and out, okay.
Okay.
All right.
As long as it's, I'm there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so now, the man door, you're calling it, will be in the back, not in the front.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I, I don't live there, I have tenants there, and they cannot back in and out of their driveway. There's always so many cars parked on the street there. And if you go down the street a couple more houses, you don't have that problem with all of the cars parked in the street. So that, you know, my tenants are all parked in the driveway. So right at that corner, there's a lot of cars in the street already. I didn't want this to add more vehicles to the corner.
Okay, fine. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else, anyone else from the public within 200 feet wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet wanting to be heard? With that?
No, there is.
There is? Okay.
John K.
Is there a Joan K out there?
John K.
Joan K?
Someone that was on before.
Yes, okay, there we go.
Yes, hi, this is John Calagritis again.
Sir, sorry, you're only allowed to speak one time, so we can't hear you.
But I never finished, then, okay, that's fine.
Okay, fine, thank you. Okay, there being no other input, I will close the case. And Mr. Shire, is there anything else you would like to add, please?
I would, I would just like to add that the only reason we need a variance for this is because of the way the building was originally constructed, because it shares a common wall at the border of the two lots. So we do comply with the single-side yard setback requirement, but we can't possibly comply with the both-side yard requirement. We're, we're not adding cars, we're actually adding a parking space to have less cars on the street, hopefully. And as Mr. Valtudo testified, the benefits of this certainly outweigh any detriment, and there is none, from what I, what I've heard in the testimony. I would ask that the board approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shire. Okay, Mr. Shire, having said that, I will go to the, to the board, please, for a motion? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little tongue-tied with all this Zoom. May I have a motion, please, from the board?
Chairwoman Frederick, I have a quick question for Jim. Jim, when we, when we have, I guess limitations on deeds, right? How is that enforced by the township?
Mr. Valtudo can help you with that as well, but if, if an application comes before me, we always look to see if there has been a resolution on this one, and since this one is a current resolution, we would look at the entire, the resolution and any restrictions, any deed restrictions put upon it. So we, again, you can't convert a garage without, people do do it, but you're, you know, you're supposed to come for an application, if you're going to convert a garage. And at that point in time, I look up to see if the, if that residence had ever come before the board, and if they have, then we, Lillian and I pull out all the files on it and research it to see if there is, if there are any deed restrictions on it. So it's, it's, it becomes a code enforcement issue at that point in time.
Okay, Mr. Shire? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ayat. So I am still waiting for a motion from the board, please, someone.
I think Phil's trying to.
Phil? Phil? Oh, you have to unmute yourself, Phil.
So, sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
I made a motion to approve.
You're not muting yourself, I'm getting tongue-tied. Say that again?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay.
It will, it will be subject.
Phil, you're going in and out. Start again.
Okay. I made a motion to approve. It will be subject to the most current survey being provided to the zoning officer for his review and approval. This addition will be, only be used as part of the existing property and the family occupying that property at this time, and not a separate living unit. The side yard setbacks appear to be consistent with the other setbacks in the neighborhood, and it does not appear to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, again, I will amend that before we get a second, just to make sure that Mr. Shire records a deed, having a deed restriction. In other words, he'll do a deed from the applicant to the applicant, indicating the deed restriction that this will be only for a single-family use and nothing further. So having said that, do I have? I'm sorry, yes?
Skip makes it up.
And that the garage will not be converted to living space, a bedroom or any other type of living space. of living space. So having said that, do I have a second on the motion?
Madam Chair, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Call call, please, Lillian? Who, who seconded?
Kamba.
Right, Mr. Kamba.
Okay, good. Okay, Mr. Kamba?
Yes, on the motion.
Okay. Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mansori?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes, on the motion.
Ms. Federik?
Yes, on the motion.
This application is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Shire. Thank you, Mr. Valtudo. Mr. Ali, thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you back in business.
Yep, have a good evening. We have some resolutions to be approved. Lillian, please?
You have my- Got it? Which is not on here. Go ahead. And then just give that back. Okay, we have, um, two resolutions. Case five, 2020, applicant James George, approved June 23rd, 2020. Z6, 2020, Helene Sosha, approved June 23rd, 2020.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we'll do a roll call rather than the all-in-favor. Lillian, please?
Mr. Kamba?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mansori?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sahada? Was he back on? No. He's here, but he's got to unmute if he's going to-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, on, yes, on the motion.
Okay. And Mr. Beatty was here?
Yes.
Yes, on the motion.
Okay, Mr. Ski Bar is not present. Ms. Federik?
Yes, on the motion. Okay. Gentlemen, now we are going to go into the closed session before we, what you're going to do is leave this session, go into the other session that you got the information on for the closed session, and then we'll come back to this session to close this out. So everyone hang up and call back in on the second number. Thank you. Okay, guys. All right, we're back on public record. Uh, I now need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, gentlemen. We'll talk to you next meeting. I'm not sure what's happening, but you'll find out when we find out. Stay safe.
Thanks, everybody. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Happy life forwards.